But besides that, we did not much after the end of March since I started last finalizing the spring amendment for the water sewer map. Again, I was highly updated. I have all the information from Gary and from town here. I knew we'd be able to get out of a question, I won't get back to it, but that is in process. We're looking to probably come in this one, like with Mr. Midsummer for the money position to survive as an assistant with the con plan and a lot of the beauty con plan that's in action now. And transportation wise, we're still doing a transportation master plan. That is going slowly as other things start seeing be hollering on. That is still ongoing. And did email Gary, and I thought I'd come to you more, maybe I did not. If I did not, I will send it to you through the survey that the Maryland Department of Planning, full transportation aspects, what are needs and all that. I'll forward that to you tomorrow right at the office. Just want to get an idea of what the towns and jurisdictions, you know, all around the state, what their thoughts are. And I think this is a lot more geared towards the future of transportation, autonomous type things, ride shares, that there's a lot of different aspects that I do not look at. There's some of them I remember. So that is sort of where we are. And I'll probably come next month, send Abigail and I over to come today just to make sure everything seems, you don't worry about anybody feels comfortable or seems comfortable. Map wise, because of the maps for the con plan, again, the biggest thing there, the thing, as you show, going along, here's look at the ones that you believe that they need to change, these four you need to change. I definitely think there's certain maps, like the water sewer map, obviously that's something that I take care of and that was last updated after the trauma update. And by now, it's kind of closed. So that water sewer map is relatively the same. The biggest thing that would be a difference is the houses that would go to Snicker Summit wouldn't likely, when the trauma update was done in 2017, we may have had that whole area or part of it in, to say priority. Right now, wouldn't likely, the drawing, everything is now online. So just either bring that up to date, just changing the map, I think. So I can get with Abigail and she not know the maps. Thanks for letting her know. Here are the maps that we've identified, we'll go over and here are the questions that maybe we're going to ask. I don't know how it's been. For the transportation, depending on how things were, we did the original plan, I don't know if the streetscape was part of that, I honestly guess it scaled back on what was going to be the one, um, in my understanding. So that's the little things. So we'll, I'll, 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 I'll,[257.26]
So, what we have in front of us is, right now, there's nothing formally there. It has nothing that's come through from Bill, who used to be one of the, one of the planning commissions now, our zoning administrator, took the spot that Dale Gray should have, or was appointed to that spot. And so, we have chatted about this some, and we, we have a couple of choices, of course, and there's the do nothing until somebody comes to us with something formalized. Or, we could chat about this, and, you know, it's... I'm coming, I was bringing this here as Bill mentioned it to me, thinking about how we, in going to town council meetings, talk about trying to be business friendly. We don't often have opportunities to be business friendly. And fortunately, we have an attorney that tries to keep us on the straight and narrow so that we're not showing a favoritism in one way or another. But, as a, trying to be a rational person, out there, the cows see, or the caskets see, the, the signs, and the people coming down the road, it's not in town, and it's not quite the same issue as having a large sign flapping over your Uncle Matty. So, I, I was coming as, to at least put out for discussion and get other thoughts about the idea of us suggesting town council, or, excuse me, town attorney, maybe help us with the verbiage, the verbiage, and location to make a change to the code, a recommendation to the town council of a change to the code, for an allowed usage, I guess, if that's the right term we would use, because I know we've had allowances, we had prohibited uses, we don't really have that as much anymore.
Well, there's a fair number of prohibited uses.
Oh, there are, plus with the signs.
Even with the signs, yeah.
We used to have it in different areas in there. Now, we've put it all to one spot.
Each zoning district had its own sign section.
Yes, exactly. But, but we still couldn't do that, correct?
Well, you could do that.
Not, not just, but we could say that.
To be candid, I haven't looked at the code with the eye to figuring out how to change this circumstance. But, there's a number of different ways that you could probably do it. You could put it, I wouldn't put it, I wouldn't do anything in the light, and I'm just off the top of my head, I wouldn't do anything in the light industrial language to change the provision that's already there, which says, development in light industrial is subject to the zoning code, or to the sign code. I don't, you have to be careful not to paint with too broad a brush. And one of the things that I think the commission and the legislative body will want to think about is the nature of allowable signs, if there are to be allowable temporary signs. You, the signs like are out there now are clearly signs just selling, or advertising the wares that are in the building. You may or may not want to limit that to no more than three, or, again, depending on the front foot assessment, not assessment, you know, measurements, like other signs are, how big your signs can be, how high your signs can be, do they have to be attached to the building? A sign that is a nice polite happy little please buy this tractor sign is different from 26 guys every Saturday out there blowing in the wind trying to get, come look at the, at the tractor. So, there's a lot of different things that could go in there, and how you would structure that, I haven't, I just haven't sat down to look at, because I haven't been directed to.
Michelle, are we, the planning commission, now under an obligation to act because it was brought to our attention?
No. No, you could determine, you could determine that you're perfectly happy with prohibitions on banners, and you don't care, and that you're, you're satisfied with the way the law is right now, in which case, the Huber folks get told to take their banners down.
But, that would be us acting.
No, you don't, you don't, you don't do anything.
We would tell, we could tell Bill Schneeman, our zoning administrator, that we are happy with our laws, and that he needs to go do, and then he takes over.
And then he would, he has two options. He can go to the council and say, council, you are the legislative body, this is what I am suggesting you do, and then the council can either say, Bill, I agree with you, let's draft something and shoot it by the planning commission and see what they say. Or, the council can say, no, we don't want signs on the sides of buildings coming into town, so, Mr. Schneeman, now you go and enforce. So, the, the commission can recommend against a change, and the council can thank you all very kindly for your interest.
If they want.
And do whatever the council wants to do. So, they're not bound, you don't have veto power effectively over what the council does, but the council obviously wants the input of this body. That's the, that's the whole structure in the state law, that's how we do it.
But, we also could make a recommendation.
Yeah, you can do it yourself, you can, you know, you've, this has been brought to your attention, and you want to bring it to their attention.
And short of us, I mean, technically, Bill should enforce and say, take the signs down.
Yes.
Because that's what the code has out there.
Yes. Practically, if Bill is in the process of recommending, or talking to Mr. Huber, who I know there isn't a Mr. Huber probably anymore, but, Mr. Huber manager, about putting together a request, and, you know, we're going to do, to do this within a certain amount of time, he doesn't have to enforce immediately. I do think that it's legitimate for him to say, well, this is an ongoing thing, and we know that the legislative body is going to be looking at this, because we've asked them to, and they've agreed. If that doesn't happen, if the Huber folks just either don't care and take the signs down, or want to go the variance route, they can either go the variance route, or they could appeal a determination by the zoning administrator that they're in violation, there's all, there's some technically different ways to skin that particular cat. At the end of the day, if he loses, he has a right to go to the circuit court, this is all this process lawyer and stuff that can get in the way of actually functioning, but ultimately, either the law will change, or the signs will have to be removed. But, I don't think there's any particular problem in not running out there tomorrow and taking the signs down, if there's an ongoing discussion about changing the law.
So, sequencing, you know, we, we don't meet for another month. And, I, I feel an obligation professionally to reach back to Bill.
Yeah, and I have to apologize to you, because I did send Bill an email this morning with all of this in it, and it was not until I walked in here that I thought, I should have copied Mark on that. So, I will send it to you tomorrow, but it will just be a rehash of what I've said now.
Just like my wife, because, boy, that would...
You can't say your wife's a rehash, you're on television.
So, after the fact, oh, you're right, I am in big trouble. So, after the fact, because I walked in here also realizing I should have reached out to Bill and said, hey, this is what my plan is, to bring it here to the planning commission, you one-upped me and already reached out to him, so, okay, but, yes.
It seems to me that the only time we hear about the sign issue is after the fact, that somebody's already done something, that, you know, they've already put it up without permission, or whatever. Is there any way we can be proactive, like put something in the newsletter, reminding everybody that there is an ordinance for signage in the protocol, can do that? Or, do we want to have a procedure in place to grant a waiver on ours? Like, the last time we had this was when Lone Star painted the whole side of the building.
Yeah.
I agree, you know, you don't do that, you know, that was, that was obvious, but a couple of banners that are temporary and they're preventing some products, is that such a violation?
And, and we have had that, and I know of in the last four or five years, that Dale was, you know, deal with that. But, you know, it didn't come to us, and nobody came and asked for variances, it was just part of what the zoning administrator has to enforce. In this case, I, I kind of liked the process, you know, that, that somebody said something to him, and then he came and said something essentially honest, like, Michelle, to get some sense, to get a feel for whether there's an opening to be able, for them to keep them up there.
But, I think Mr. Monroe's point is well taken, because the zoning law on signs has a requirement for zoning certificates, for approval, for a number of different things. And it, people don't think about those things, they get used to not thinking about those things, and so, they don't. And then they spend money and put up a sign, or I, I don't know this for a fact, but I suspect that the signs at Hubers may very well have come from Kubota, or International Harvester, or, you know, I have a little bitty lawnmower, so I don't know how any of that stuff works. But, it may not be a bad idea just to post something in the, in the newsletter, or on the, on the website, a reminder that if there are questions about signs, here's the code provisions to look at, and if you still have questions, you know, let us know.
But, would the owners of Hubers ever see that?
That's what I was going to ask, Dan, like, do our businesses get...
I have to double check with Kalina.
The newsletter?
I'm 100% sure, I know, we are also in talks of making it a digital and just emailing, so it's...
Because Pub Dog is also a pub, the brewery, they put up banners, they have...
They're not in your town.
Yeah. Oh, I thought they were part of that purple section.
Oh, no, they're, they're actually right outside Westminster, but they are in the county.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Michelle, was there a complaint?
I, I don't know that there was a complaint, I believe there may have been a question.
Yeah, that's what, that's the way he first...
A question to Bill, I mean, somebody, yeah.
Questioning why that was allowed and what wasn't allowed.
Oh, yeah, I, I noticed them, but I, you know, went right past them.
I would think, I just noticed them too, I actually thought they were painted on, I actually thought they were done very well, and I, I didn't see an issue with it. I would think we'd want to promote the avail, uh, change in the light industrial in regards to signs, not touch town necessarily, but for that light industrial area, I don't see how that can be looked at bad and only help them.
One thing you need to keep in mind when we draft, assuming we do.
Yes.
Light industrial is actually, I don't know if it's permitted or conditional use in the employment campus. So, if you had an, a light industrial user, assuming that there is ever developed an employment campus, but there's open land there, and, you know, the world is changing. What you draft for across the street, for the, for the edification of the neighboring cows, may not be applicable to a light industrial use within economic development, whatever that, whatever we call that thing, employment campus. So, just, just, that's why you gotta, there's always, always so many glitches that you have to try and avoid.
And, I, I wanted to, I, I agree with you about putting stuff in the newsletter, or, but there are lots of things, not just signs, things like water bills, you know, waste treatment plants, all kinds of things out there, and trying to get...
Don't push a shed on your property line.
You need to have licensed vehicles that you park on the street. There's a lot of those kind of things, that's, that's kind of, I'm sure I made a face when you said that, but yes, I hear the message.
It wasn't to you, though.
Yes.
So, so where do we go from here, boys, as the song says? That is before my time, by the way.
I thought you were referring to Buffy, you were probably just like a reference.
I think we need to discuss an amendment to the sign...
That's where Buffy got it from.
Zoning rules in, in regards to light industry, and, and word it in such a way that we look out for, I mean, I don't know how, what we're going to say, but I do believe we should be involved in the discussion and make a recommendation to the town council.
And, and you're relatively, and that's exactly, we can make the recommendation, they can decide to accept or not accept.
And they're going to get it from, they're going to probably get it from the zoning administrator as well, so they can get two. If we agree, that might push them toward whatever we, we want. I mean, but, you're right, it should be a recommendation, and they have the decision. They're the voted in body, so...
I, I...
It's probably because...
I feel like, because there has been an open discussion between Bill and the people at Huber, they, they have said they could take the sign in, they'd rather not, because it's going to cost them to take them down, and if there's a possibility, this can make you keep them up, they didn't want to take them there and put them back up. So, it, it sounds like they're, they're amenable to working with us. I'd rather not push it out another month until...
We can help it.
We, they come here and talk to us, which then puts it out another month before we do something to be able to get, to look at. That, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this.
If we're going to let them keep it, doesn't matter if we keep pushing it. If we think we're going to pull it, then try to do something quickly, but if the thought process is not that, I don't see a question in taking our time to learn about the issue a little bit more, as opposed to jumping into it. That, that would be my, because I'll be, my, my initial thought is, we want to be pro-business, but we also want to protect the ci, you know, our town. So, we, and, and I think doing that with a quick decision doesn't serve anybody.
One of the things we want to try to avoid is what Westminster allowed to happen, where you have neon signs, you've got the men flopping around there in the street. It is a rabbit hole, we start going now, and we start trying to find what's allowed and what's not. I forgot about the connection of the, the EC to, yeah, yeah, so that complicates it.
Not, not extraordinarily, it just has to be part of the drafting.
Yeah, there's purple in more than one spot.
And the purple, the, the purple is not in the employment campus, but it's my recollection, and I'm sure I'm right, that light industrial is an allowable use, or light industrial uses can be an allowable use in the employment campus. So, the campus is always going to be whatever the color campus is.
Light blue.
Brown, or whatever it is. Light blue.
Light blue.
Sky blue.
Springdale, and, and their...
Oh, okay.
And their thing across the street from Springdale, their warehouse.
Yeah. And what is the definition of a bat, when I think of a banner?
A banner, that's...
Of a freestanding, say, between two telephone poles, or two poles?
Actually, I looked at about four different sources, including my favorite Oxford, Oxford English shorter, it's not the whole thing, I have the shorter, the shorter is about that big. And every, there's the attached on one side and flapping in the breeze, and there's attached on two sides over Main Street, and then there's some that just say that it's affixed to a, to a, a location, but is not permanent on the location. There's also some, a whole bunch of stuff about medieval heraldry, but I didn't think that was real relevant. So, yeah, well, when, when, you know, honestly, when Bill first called me, and he says banners, and I'm thinking, that's not a banner, because I'm thinking the, the one-sided thing, or across Main Street, Westminster always has the one across Main Street. But, if you look, we don't have, we don't, the to, the code does not have a definition of banner, personally, I would prefer to try and avoid defining banner, because I think you're generally, and this is just my opinion, generally better off with words in common usage, to use the common usage as your guide, as opposed to trying to squeeze, squeeze that and do some kind of bizarre protean exercise to say, well, a lot of the people think that a banner is this, but we think a banner is only half this. You know, you get, things get really thorny when you start to do that. But, yeah, it's what is a banner? Again, if the zoning administrator, who has a fair amount of authority in making determinations of this sort, says, I am the zoning administrator, and my decision is that these constitute banners, unless someone appeals it and a court says, no, they don't constitute banners, in the town of New Windsor, they're banners. And if they're not banners in Hempstead, because the zoning administrator in Hempstead doesn't agree with that determination, that's why lawyers were born. You know, it's just, it's a weird thing, but it's just the way of it. So, and, just another question, and this is actually a question to Mr. Hoffman. We've got a council meeting in another week and a half. Do we want to talk at the council meeting, see if we can get, in the new business discussion, a sort of a referral, if you will, from the planning commission, that says, council members, the planning commission has discussed this, they believe we should go forward with drafting, do you agree? Because if they don't agree, they'll pay me anyway, but it seems kind of silly.
Well, right, so that's what I was hoping, that we would make the decision as the planning commission tonight, do we want to push this forward on behalf of the planning commission, or are we going to sit back and wait for maybe Bill to do it, and then get dragged in on the opposite side? Sounds like from Mark's conversation, to keep things rolling, and from what Kevin said, it sounds like there is at least some agreement that the planning commission should push this forward to the town council.
Right.
Do we have some kind of agreement on that, that the planning commission wants to do that?
Yeah.
So, if that's the case, then, Michelle, it sounds like...
Do we need to vote?
No.
It sounds like the planning commission is at least in agreement that we should push this forward, we've heard about it, we've talked about it, we think it's in the town's best interest to have verbiage created for the code to address this issue. Right? And we can talk, and see if we can get it on the agenda, and talk about it.
I think there's plenty of time.
Yes.
Oh, two or three days, plenty of time. No, just to, I think Gary will probably be sending out his usual, here's the draft, tell us if you want anything else.
Yes.
So, we can get, get this to him to be part of the draft, and it'll be just briefly discussed.
And if it's, no, they're not really interested in moving forward with it, that's one message, if they say yes, they are, that, then, I mean, we certainly could come back in the next meeting and say, Michelle, we decided we still want you to move forward with, of recommendations, but obviously, we'll have feedback from what the council says, and if they give a, an affirmative, then what would be the next step to move forward?
Probably to, back to me to do some kind of drafting, and then bring a proposed draft text amendment to this body.
Yes.
You know, I, I personally think that standing on ceremony is fine if ceremony makes sense to stand on it, but we can talk about it here, but I don't see that that would preclude also sending it to the council members as something that's coming, is what we talked about, here's the draft we're going to be talking about at the planning commission, if, if, you know, if there's some consensus to do that to, once we get to that point.
I like the idea of you feeling a map, touching base on it, or you want to wait until...
I'm, you know, the meeting's only a week and a half away, or whatever, so I'm, I'm more than willing to bring it up. All right, we'll get it on the agenda, we'll bring it up, we'll talk about it, we'll get some head nod, and, and we can move forward.
Yeah, you're going to have a busy meeting on, on Wednesday.
I'll get some, I'll get some head nod, and we'll...
Theoretically, you could come with something for us next meeting, so what's that, possibly?
Yeah, unless, who knows what, but I'll do my level best, it shouldn't be that, that is, you know, we're not remaking the wheel here, so...
And, and your esteemed opinion is that we don't really have, we don't have to tell them to take it down until we make the decision.
I think if there's, I, I think if there's ongoing discussions that, that the applicable law may change, in, unless there's you and cry about enforcement, I don't think it's necessarily selective enforcement, it's not like there's six different buildings out there, and five have banners that we say, take them down, and one has a banner that we leave up. That's just my opinion.
I, I want to get back to him and give him some kind of feedback, because the fact that we're having one going discussion.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, comments on this topic? Any other words of advice for Councilman Hoffman? That's what we're... Okay, well, thank you. Not often we can have something like this to talk about.
Quite likely for us, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so, before we start talking about the maps, I realized also, walking in the door, walking in the door is a very revolutionary thing. I got a letter that came in from Joe Griffiths, who was here from Maryland, partnering the planning last month. There wasn't a whole lot in that letter. I think that Joe, who was working with us, was not able to provide us, wasn't doing any real scorekeeping of anything. So, I feel like what we got back was talking about a couple of spots where there is some legislation you need to reference, and a couple of referrals and spots, but I feel like those first, some pages we looked at, there was really nothing that was done with those. So, yeah, I, I feel like if we're going to make any headway on this, we're going to have to go back and kind of do this again. I know, I was making notes as we went through, and I know others were, but unfortunately, I think we have to revisit those things, because there's no way, the last thing I wanted to turn over to send Emily, just my view of what I think we talked about there.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I believe we can get them to maps tonight. I don't know if people would want, if they're comfortable talking again, starting. I don't think we would need to spend as much time as we did before, because I think we were all on notes in there, but I, I was disappointed in what we got, I was expecting more, but that explains probably why we had multiple visitors, as opposed to just face to face itself. Sorry, I covered that news, and that's like, kind of disappointing. But, Emily's going to make us smile. Okay, for maps, I think it was 16-oh. I will admit, I, I find that kind of readable. I was thinking that the smaller, you know, it's nice laser printing as opposed to the old days, you know, that, that, that's not too bad. And you have the small one also, you find it okay to read it?
Not with these really cool glasses that I wear.
I will note, the PDF does not have the maps.
Uh, that's probably a good point, you probably don't, honestly, I don't think you'll need to do any, but I'll make, I'll make sure you get copies.
Okay.
Let's do it that way, so that you'll have them, you can, you can see where they are and reference them. Actually, I'm going to ask the board if they're going to make a copy. Whenever we needed a copy of these plans, because we've added a couple of new members over the last year, and, and I don't know how you do this without hard copy, frankly. And I see that there are maps in there. Could you see the...
Can we check all of Donna's stuff that she has for the planning commission, and see if she has the map file?
Yeah.
And then I can hear...
They're all the same, if they're smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
16 years, that'd be three days, just to...
These are what we... These are what we... Emily and I could spend a minute together, because what I'd like to be able to do is if you could find out from Donna, get a copy, so we can get that.
I can't say I've ever opened all of them.
Okay, so, map number one, it's the 97 land use designations, and, why did you go to this at first? Because this also has a light industrial on it. This is the one I was looking for. And when you go through the code in particular, and not as much in the comprehensive plan, but the code for... but the code for sure, you start talking about the different land uses. The R ten down to R one, village center, which obviously we're in right here, neighborhood business, which I always kind of started with that in my head. The appointed campus, the light industrial, which is the pink we were just chatting about, the appointed campus is the light blue. One here, I believe we're probably gonna be talking about changes for the two developments that came on.
Correct.
But, I, I, was that a loss? Or most of these really have other changes that we're going to have on these. But, the developments, which I imagine is the adapter state or something. The reserve has had multiple names.
Oh, Lord.
It's called when you moved in. They've had multiple names for that area.
Was New Windsor Heights when they first bought in?
There was another shortly.
Oh, yeah, there's been two or three at least.
But all of those, since I've been on the commission, and, and I did this right at the very beginning when I came on board, so, I think, so.
Well, the colors don't necessarily change, they just need all these kutsi putsy little lines through them.
Yeah, just be aware of, you know, in the ninety-seven, what those two parcels were designated in the land use, versus what's, or now, they were residential, leak and drain residential, whatever they have been, what they are, you know, today, you know, Snyder's is sort of a mixed bag, you know, they have single family homes as well as townhomes, one uphill, we saw townhomes. So, sort of, you know, the designations of what they should go do now, if they are changing on what they were.
So, it's actually what I'm referencing that is on map four, where it's got the existing use of land, that's where they're changing it. It's all mapped.
And that's, that's a good, good question, which is, there's something to do, like, exist, please, you're changing, keep it down.
That's existing, yeah, see, that was all.
That is sort of what is on the ground today. So, the Hampstead, they didn't have the ability, you know, time to literally go around and decipher if everything matches what they, you know. So, I believe they should use designated land use to map, although, you know, they didn't have, they don't have, they didn't have the time or the resources to go out and work. But if you're existing land use map, you're saying map four actually mimics pretty much what it looks like today, especially to new subdivision developments. And, we can do that now, if, if nothing has really changed, just, you know, Springdale Prep has always been, women campus, like, that was the school, and then, now, you know, that, like, so, if everything's gonna stay the same, I think we do map four, existing land use. Well, thank you much, most of the files are actually there.
They are different in how, because, one, the existing use of land we have on here is a type of structure. That's a one here, as opposed to how it's zoned. And even on the larger one, I'm having trouble reading, but it looks to me like on four, Snyder Summit.
Shows that as agriculture.
It's agriculture.
Yeah, it's agriculture.
Yeah.
So it can't be right.
Yeah, that's about the-
Yeah, so it's gonna have to change.
Yeah, that'll need to change to, to whatever designation.
No, that has your zoning, your, different, your zoning.
I don't, I don't really know what are the different uses of, of, between the two, but to me, conceptually, being able to see, this is what's considered village center. This is what's considered the, 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 well, the light industrial is the proof. No, that actually, I think, having the two different maps, because we're smaller, right? I'm gonna find the one to keep both.
Yes, yes. Michelle, do you happen to know the definition of public use? So, I see, public, on map four, public use is green, and that includes, it looks to me like, the, the new school building.
Which was the old school.
Right, but is now not public, that's a private. Am I mixing up, or is that wrong?
I don't, I don't, I apologize, I don't have the code with me, so I don't know exactly how that designation was arrived at. I mean, now, I just really don't know. Usually, if you look at, a lot of this is, is town-owned property.
Right.
The little parks and that sort of thing. But that whole area with the school, which is, at least for now, a private school, is a private school.
But they don't own that, that's still-
They, they-
It's still owned by the county.
But that school is, but on Springdale-
The Brethren Center is, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that school is, the Brethren Center, part of the campus-
Is private.
Is, is owned flat out.
Yes.
That has all the fire department, the carnival grounds, and air facilities is public use.
Right.
Is that a, something that needs to be changed, the labeling, the-
Well, I think, I mean, the fire company was, all of that has been fire company since the mind of man recalls, so, I think that when they designated it as public use, it was really more, this isn't private commercial use than, this is open to the public use. This is for public benefit, if you will.
Yes.
But I, you know, I, I can't sit here and swear to that, but just looking at where it is, and then, of course, you know, there's a couple of little spots that are stormwater management and, and things like that. So, the, the largest question is, is that school? The old, the old, the old middle school property, which is or is not the new Springdale School, but right now, it's still county-owned.
Correct. All right, I didn't mean to get us off track there.
No, I know, I cut that as another-
No, so I don't, I don't know how you would, how you would want to designate that going forward, because it's still county-owned. And the county is leasing it to a private entity, but what if the private entity never buys it? Institutional, maybe. And that, it's possible that in the, in the text of the code, which I don't have in front of me, there might be a reference like that. We'll look at it.
Now, these maps are county, correct? Because it's got the county seal on it.
Correct, and they were created by the county, and we're, and that's what happened.
So, it would be more of, most, their definitions of the different counties.
Well, it's, it's one of those where, even though we create, the county created the maps, but the useness and the verbiage came from the town.
Town, okay.
Exactly, so, especially if they come from residential type stuff, a lot of town, a lot of places may actually use, even though they're separate, they're, the use is not exactly, the zoning's not being used vice versa, sometimes just, just to make it easier to completely use the same. So, let's say R two thousand, or, you know, R seven five hundred is used, and that's also being a zoning. But, it's, it can be, it can be tricky to be, it is. So, it sounds like there may need to be, you, you, potentially, that you may be able to reference, or, if, 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 that's the way it was meant to be, in case.
Yeah. And, yeah, you do that. So, that's something that we'll have, we'll have to look at and hack out a bit, see how it plays out. But also, in that area is, like, the library building, which, I mean, it's not open to the public use, but it's a, it's a public office.
And all, all the parks are, the parks and the walk, yeah, the parks are on.
You're already on nine?
I mean, I think sort of, the way the county does, like, the county changes-
Oh, facilities, yeah.
We have uses called conservation. And like, the drawing of our county buildings are conservation. That's just how it is, it's a little have a facility used, it says, either it's government or institutional or school, conservation then, that is the use, and if, if the zoning itself, government buildings, not pretty much, all the town.
Yeah. I think the use drives the zoning designation. I, I know in Hampstead, it, it's the same way. At least it has been now, that parcel is no longer officially public, even though it will be used by the public.
So, I think we can give direction, say we want to group one and four.
Yes.
In terms of changes to those-
Need to add the new developments, the two new developments.
New developments. That's talking one and four. And that goes throughout these.
Yeah, the new, the new developments have to be added throughout.
Yes, throughout. I flipped to the second one, point here, because you were talking about the conservation public use, you were asking that question, and I knew there was one. This one actually shows the school property as Carroll County Board of Education. Is it actually the Board of Education that owns that land, or is it?
No.
No, it's the-
The Board of Ed convened it to the commissioners.
Okay, so-
Commissioners own it.
County Commissioners.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah, okay, I do remember.
And they still own it, it was, it's under lease.
Right.
But the transaction hasn't been completed. Also, we don't have our nice little, whatever you call it, what do you call it, the park across the street, something with an F, Freedom?
Corner Park.
Fountain Park.
Fountain Park.
Fountain Park.
That's right, Fountain Park.
Come on. And we own the Dealman, so, yeah, there's several changes in, in this little downtown corner that have to get painted pale blue.
Does it have map one two?
Map two.
And then I'm assuming that that little light green Carroll County Commissioners is the library building. There at the High Street Extended.
No, that can't be just on the left side.
Not sitting on the right spot.
But then it doesn't, but all of, isn't a lot of the light blue that drew you would know, and isn't that the fire company?
Uh, yes.
Which isn't mayor and council, it's the fire company.
And the storage treatment plant, that's all in that area also.
Okay, so, I mean, that might be something that we have to look at to, to get a little more accurate on.
That would be the library. Yeah, that does, see, that doesn't have the, that doesn't have the High Street Extension in it, that map is not really-
Well, it's old.
Yeah. Two thousand and ten.
That's the problem, it doesn't have the extension.
It looks like it does.
See, here's High Street. So, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a curving around.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's like the, part of the field, it's part of the carnival grounds, that's wrong.
Well, here, it's showing right here.
He's really on the side of the park.
Yeah, okay, but it, but it still has the old Atlee Avenue, the Atlee-
That Atlee used to go through.
Just runs the old Atlee Avenue, and that-
Yeah, doesn't go through anymore. Anyway, there's changes there that have to be made.
Known changes are Fountain Park, Dealman Inn, the, there's a green little county Commissioners, it's definitely in the wrong spot, because I think it's supposed to be across the Green High and Manny's. Like, does this county commissioners own that property?
That's the public library building.
The library.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know that the library, Qua Library owns it, and not the Commissioners. I don't know who owns the library stuff.
Nine one ones in there, right, so I don't know.
Yeah, I, I tend to think that that might be counted.
Yeah, that's not-
Okay.
I don't know, that's something we'll have to figure out, because we don't- But, yeah, those roads are a little funky.
With this little blue thing that's over at the Blue Ridge, there's a little, mayor and council have a little spot up there.
It's probably the, um, pump station. Isn't there a pump station right in there?
That's the water tower.
Water tower.
Oh, the water tower, okay.
Yes, on top of the hill.
No, that's the, the pump station is on thirty-one.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
In the back of-
Blue Ridge is the actual water tower.
There's a farm, with the dirt roads.
It's in the back there.
Yeah. It's between the Blue Ridge and the Spring Lake, Springdale property. Right on that line.
I think a review of map two is called for.
And it's Carroll County Commissioners, not the Board of Ed. And I guess you're probably the most likely to know these other little blue spots, whether they're the right spot or not.
Yeah, they all need to be reviewed.
That's where the hillside, the wells for hillside drive.
We had the contact tank and all of that property-
That's the little park.
When we did this.
I don't know what this, and that's where the coronator is.
Oh, okay.
That's where the, up behind Snyder's, and I don't know if those-
Had the waste-
Pump houses?
Waste treatment plant was-
Water coming in town?
Town property.
It would be a lot farther out.
It was put, in part where the lagoons and all of that-
Wasn't that one of the county's, because of the school there?
Oh, that's, that's up to where the, uh, the new, well, it used to be a reservoir.
I don't, I don't know.
I guess, was that the coronator tank?
Coronation tank, top of the hill.
Yeah, that's what, that's what-
That's up at the top of the hill, down, going towards Marston.
Two parcels there.
Drew, when the waste treatment plant was put in, do you have any sense whether that was taking away any of the school?
Uh, no, as far as, from what I can remember, that was part of the Lampard Farm, Harry Lampard Farm, that was Meadow. That was in sixty-three, sixty-four.
You got to, you get this down.
Yeah. Yeah, because the Atlee, uh, the Atlee where Sam used to live, that was the Harry Lampard Farm when I was a kid growing up, so. And I imagine that was part of their Meadow down along the, so, whether the town bought that, or-
So, now, I'm thinking probably, but if anything, it would be more the, the fire department having given up.
Uh, no, we didn't buy that, uh, till nineteen seventy.
That's when they bought that new land, with the new firehouse?
Oh, no, the carnival grounds. No, the, the, where the carnival, that was in two thousand and four, probably.
Is that town land that the fire department's on, or is that?
Uh, it was county land, and it was, I guess, deeded to the town.
Yeah, I was gonna say-
It was deeded to the town, and then the town-
And then it was deeded to the fire company.
I, I think it's like a, it's like a hundred-year, a hundred-year lease for a dollar.
Yeah.
It's a, some token transaction.
Land lease, you guys build, yeah. Makes sense.
So, I guess essentially, it's the town's.
But that would account for why it still says that it's owned by the mayor and council, and not the fire company.
Mm-hmm, yes. You know, I think Jack gave the town a dollar.
So, it's owned by Jack Coe, really?
And he's got a receipt for it somewhere.
Look at him smiling up there.
Arrest him.
So, there'll be some jigging around on one, too.
I don't know that there's been any change. Well, no way, there was.
There were some additions, right?
Well, no, some of the lease, was it the lease property came out? It was in a district or an easement, remember, we went through all of this with the planning commission a while back, remember what I'm talking about?
Yes.
And, because they wanted it to, they wanted it to come out, and we had to change the growth area boundary to get them, to let them get the state to do whatever they wanted with some kind of easement.
The lease property is right here, but they don't, there's no-
This is, this is the downside of being around for twenty-three years. Yeah, and I think so, that, that was the genesis of that, remember?
Yes, I, I do remember, going through that.
Yeah, that's about where I stopped remembering, but, um-
There's nothing in that parcel.
Because actually, if you, there was this revision, this, what I have, is the two thousand and seven, and then there was a revision in two thousand and eight, and I think it was because- And I think it was because of that little bitty thing that we did.
Do you, do you, is yours updated as of ten?
Uh, I haven't updated as of ten, but it's not the one that gets stuck in this slot. See, you have the same thing I have.
I got the two thousand ten amended.
Yeah, yeah, you've got the second amendment, I just have the first one. And you've got the second one. I don't know if everybody got it, but it doesn't really matter.
Kind of the, the ag preservation stuff, you should be able to put that, what's in there.
But it was because we pulled part of it out of the growth area boundary, back down there, down in Jerry Lee's property. I think it was Jerry Lee's property.
That's map three, is what he said.
That's map three, yes.
Yeah, and they had to, uh.
That's all stuff that they should have, the county's gonna have, all that.
Something with the sewer and there was something with the growth area boundary, or something with the railroad, and it was a whole bunch of, oh, at least.
No, I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's what pushes into that second amendment.
But we don't, we don't really have this, that's more the county has this information on, on.
He said he has it.
Who's around.
All right, you said map four.
Yes.
For those that are new, say it's more, different between the town limits and the G A B. Per town ban, per. Could you maybe just say?
Explain it, Lucy.
Explain it, explain it, that's right.
Lucy.
I mean, pretty much the, that's what we look at is the burden area boundary is the area that the town would like to one day grow into organic, into, uh, or vice versa, typically is actually. Yes, that is, that is where the town is critical to be at one point in time.
And then the town would have to think about water and sewer service for all of those. And so running water and sewer lines out, as, as you see some of those on the outlier, so even if some of those people wanted to come in to town, there would have to be a decision of cost and things like that to even do that.
And I ask that question because if you flip back to three, you will notice around the town, the town boundaries of the G A B, which is where that red line is, where there's that potential group. The reason that's carved out that way is because we're almost totally surrounded by a reservation.
Or quarry.
Or quarry, or quarry, well, that's down here, in my armpit. So, that's one of the reasons it's driving this to not have a professional consultant come in and guide and lead us. Is there just not a whole lot out there that we could go into. We aren't in Manchester or Sykesville and, uh, so.
For which we should be dearly grateful.
Yes, exactly, we are grateful. But Dave brings up a really good point, is that new waste treatment plant is not new any longer. And, um, not only are there repairs and stuff that need to be done, but the reality is if we annex the rest of that space, there wouldn't be an enhanced which. But that's not why.
Well, we're in the, likely in the process of doing that enhanced nutrient reduction, whatever the hell, the upgrade to that facility.
That's correct, but that, I, I don't know.
I don't know if that'll increase your capacity at all.
Allow us regardless.
Increase capacity, um, and you can, in the process of doing, we need to be in our operating ability to be as good required for that aspect of the, of the next nutrient.
Reduction.
Reduction, you can do the process and potentially increase your capacity by doing, like again, that.
Even more expensive things.
Well, you also have to be, not only have the capacity, you have to be permitted to use that capacity, and that's another whole.
Discharge.
Yes.
X amount.
So, it's a lot to it.
So that was more as an education, just when you were looking at this. Map five, um, this has our zone and we were, it's not significantly different from, actually, this one's closer to one than, uh, before, this has what, our zone. That's probably an error. Well, I guess you would end up cleaning that up because G A B is different from map one and five.
So the G A B on map five shows that floating ten acre parcel, G Hibbert's, map one does not include that.
Our commercial district.
Yes.
Yes. Nor does it include that, this area above.
The soccer field, right?
And I'll say in here, there's a listed.
What it is.
It shows that.
I think that that is incorrect, I think that's what.
That's what came out, or part of it.
I, I think, that's, isn't that the lease farm?
Yeah, I think that's part of what came out.
Yes, I think that came out.
But I don't know where, I don't know where that leaves us now.
We added that.
That is a big one, a big parcel.
And here it's called ag, even though it's recreation.
The county should have that because it's.
I would hope.
I, I feel like if we.
Is it the soccer fields?
Oh, that's opposite.
Yes.
I thought there were fields, or is that over here?
These are farm fields here, this is a school and, and like a soccer field.
But I thought across from the school, there was, I thought they put in fields where he was, these years ago. There were fields where they were playing soccer and stuff, and I thought that was.
That's along here.
Oh, that's in there, okay.
That's agricultural, yeah, this is out, out the road, maybe about another.
With the chicken, the eggs are for sale?
Yes, just before you get to there.
Okay.
That's, uh, I forget what that zoomed. It's like a commercial, like.
Okay.
Maybe soup, I don't know, like a cheese or something like, it's the way it's kinda, or a little strip shop in center.
I remember they were talking about that, yes.
Map six.
I really wasn't sure what map six, what the priority funding area mean.
Is that designation even still in use? Okay, and they changed the, the language all the time down there, so I can't keep up.
Priority funding area is still.
Yeah. Oh, it's definitely a thing, I just didn't know if they called it something else.
They still call it, you say P F A for short, but that is, you're like a designation by the state. That, any, if you were in the priority funding area, you could have potential to, yeah.
That's the, that's what gets the money.
That's what gets the money, yeah, so, but, uh, have we changed any of that? I don't think we've annexed anything. We've talked about annexing G Hibbert for twenty years, but we haven't.
Right.
It's part of the smart growth concept, critical farms, all of that, bundled together.
Prioritizing funding, I think is what drives it more.
Well, yeah, definitely. Yep.
The P F A.
How many times have we talked, we wrote a whole zoning section for him and Clark.
So that's.
And they have a.
The sign seems to be missing, I think, that's what makes me think, I never saw it, it's sold, but.
I can see that side.
And they haven't planted this year, so I think it's done.
The map seven is just.
I guess this side is where the.
Solar companies and also the towing companies look different, I guess.
They seem to be.
I'm sorry, I missed that?
The solar in on the other side.
The, the, uh, map seven, the green shaded areas are possible future annexation sites. They fall within our growth annual, growth, G A B, growth area boundary.
Do we give those parcels a change from that map to?
I think as long as they, the one that's there now looks like it is the correct G A B, so I think they're correct.
So there's, but none of those parcels were annexed?
No.
No, no.
That map was definitely.
Yes.
Okay, I guess this is what they were talking about.
But, you know, I think that's a useful map to have of.
Yes, 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 yes.
And for us, potentially, but.
Yes.
And so then seven is just the negative image of six.
Correct.
Yeah. Or the positive image, come on.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, flip side.
Yes.
Map eight. There are trees, yeah, except trees, there are, for Fountain Park.
Fountain Park, we get a tree, you could fit it in there.
So that's for the town, like the facilities now?
Parks and local, yes, yeah.
Yeah. Have you seen our new town park?
I have.
Okay. Hang around till it gets dark.
Yeah.
So we need to add that?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I don't know where, I don't know where you're gonna stick a tree in there, but.
Or frisbee golf course.
This golf.
Should that be somehow mentioned? But I guess that was already on town property, right?
Yeah, that was already in, uh.
Do we want them to be named, any of these things?
Is the skate park actually named?
No.
I think it's named the skate park.
I mean, on the map, is that something that we note, do we note recreational uses? It doesn't look like.
Can we get little?
I mean, you can, I mean, I think, I think on where they go and how, by, by bicycle, I think the ones.
Well, it's, it's right there.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Titles.
But I don't know with that.
The Fountain Park.
The ball field. It's not balls field.
Yeah, the fields.
Yeah, on this eight and a half by eleven map, it's worthless to.
Yeah.
You know, you can't get that granular, you see trees.
Right, you see the trees, and if you got that little bump out window saying what it was, like you would see it coming up.
Yes, like, yes.
Becoming attraction, one nine.
Yes.
That just bounces.
Could, yes, could do that.
I noticed it had on here the, the linear, the walking trail, it, it has an air for future, is there?
Yeah, that, like, that trail was had.
It has it, yeah.
Yeah, and that could be, I mean, it's on this map, but also more than likely when the county did their whitehead plan, back to plan, the trails and, you know, industrial walkways, bike pathways, all that kind of thing should be on there. And more than likely, that may be, that they fall under the, if you don't have two separate maps, the transportation map.
Yeah, it's got it in, yeah, it, it, it's got it in there.
Probably all that.
I, I don't think we have a transportation map, but we.
Look, the county will have the, the bike and walking trails and all that stuff that they can overlay right on there, the latest.
There have been so many meetings on that.
Right, so they'll have the latest.
I gotta keep an eye out for it. Just out of curiosity, just specifically one of these, it had this yellow highlighted arrow to Westminster.
That's medium intensity recreation in mind. Now, I'm sorry, if I had to like ride a bicycle from here to Westminster, it would be way more than medium intensity. It would be like high call and ambulance recreation.
There's somebody that worked at H S B that does that every day on her lunch break, she bikes down here, she wants to be here for the twelve o'clock chimes at the, uh, Julia Roberts Church up here, every day.
Nobody, do, did you ever know Kay Church? She was before your time, she was a receptionist. And she walked, she, she got on a health kick, she lost all kinds of weight, and she walked every day from Manchester to the county office building and back at the end of the day. Oh, yeah, there was a whole thing about her in the newspaper and everything, remember?
That sounds like Forrest Gump.
Yeah.
That's, that's serious. Wow. Wow.
She was a great gal. Died young. All that walking, see, all that health is bad for you, I've always maintained that. All right. Map nine.
Map nine.
Looks like we have to move Town Hall.
Yeah.
To the new spot.
Yes. And obviously need to change the name of Windsor Middle School.
Just gotta move it.
It's gotta move, yeah. Obviously, the middle school is no longer that.
Yep.
Right.
But I don't really think there's anything else that changes on this.
That has other spots that are owned by the town.
Other spot?
Like the Dealman Inn or?
No, I'm thinking of where water is up here, where the, the fat of the street, they have.
Isn't that on one of the earlier ones, though?
That was on one of the other.
Uh, existing facilities or whatever?
It was in with the blue, the light, the light blue.
I don't think so, they were, these are much further out. I'm thinking of the one.
Oh, you're talking about the, like where the.
Five springs come together up there.
Oh.
Oh, the town farm.
No, we don't, we don't have any map that goes out that far.
Trees.
Well, the map doesn't go that far, but those really are not open to the public sorts of facilities. I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter to me whether you include them, but I, I don't think the map goes that far.
No, that doesn't go out that far.
Oh, there's the back, you can always make the back that far, but. Yeah, cause, you know, the town has a walnut grove, the town has all those springs, and I guess there's a pump out there.
On a denning.
Make it like Alaska and Hawaii.
Yeah, just, yeah, put a little one right there.
And I know that when there have been discussions, the town council knows this, and, and we're, I'm gonna talk about that before we leave tonight, about us doing a tour of the, of the town facilities. But I'm, I was just wondering if there's a value that we had out there where they would be, where we would have a map that would be able to show, here's where our water is, this is town property, and of course, there's all this stuff in between.
I think Wayne has that downstairs in his office. But what, we don't, we don't have that in this.
I just thought saying that, would there be a value to have that in here? Because we know that's coming down the pipe as a topic and an issue. I had been, I've been here in town, the fact that we've got a hundred and plus year old water main.
Looking at the other map.
We should be proud.
We're just capable.
We know how to make stuff last.
Gravity fed, I'll tell you.
You'd almost have to do like a page that's all inserts. You know, this is the dennings, this is the, the contact tank, all that, cause otherwise in there you'd have a map that would be like a, like a Graffle Marx map, you know, you'd be unfolding it up to here.
Yeah, I just, it could be an inset. Can you see what your, my people make the other, and I was, obviously they would have that information.
I would see we have, uh, all of it.
Gary hasn't burned it, he's still a chip, so I'm sure. Yeah, I see the Windsor facilities, I, I would think we'd wanna have the waste treatment plant on here. Dude, I'm sorry, that's map nine. Pumping stations, there are a lot of towers, we want that stuff on here.
We have it on there, it should also be on water sewer.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have any of the pumping.
I, I'd rather like the picture, that's why I bring that up, that'll. Yeah, that's the only one that had the picture, that's, that's really where I was looking for it. Actually, if we could do that on the water, that, that would make sense, where the pumping stations are, where the towers, waste treatment. Now, here's the Carroll County Library headquarters is in the right spot. That was done two days later than the other map, that's probably why.
I know.
I don't know, all in all, this map doesn't do much for me, other than having the nice pictures, cause it's wonderful life. Okay, current, current water service area, I think this is a valuable one.
Pretty much what we'll do if that one, instead of adding multiple grid maps for current water service, you will just insert the water, the trauma event map, the map that is, that is, you should have going around here. That's just easier to have, so you do that in some of the areas. You have current water service, priority, future, and the new things and long range, do one map, and just map that. We have in our office, it's on the websites, that kind of thing, it's just more common now, we're just having to break it down to three of our maps.
Okay.
We have map ten-ish.
Ten A, ten B.
Yep. And then on this one, you could put water towers and water.
They are correct, so what we would pull is our, what we have now, which four, you know, you know, have water towers.
Pumping stations is.
Pumping stations, the heat and plant for sewer. Pump station for sewers. You have to have a line on there too.
I think that's how it's all been made. Yeah, one with minus times.
We kinda know.
Two parcels that have water, but.
The lines we have are based on what?
Where are we?
Okay, that's what we know then.
I know, I'm just trying to. Figure out where I am.
And we do the same thing for the sewer then?
This is throwing me off, they still haven't connected, it's not, I'll go, wait a minute, that's not there.
This strip, thirty-one.
That new water line you talked about last month.
That kind of looks like it's on this map here.
Okay.
Maybe, well, yeah, you're right, I think it's coming up.
That's kind of strange.
Or from in here, I thought.
Yeah, it's kind of coming behind the, the, that house and the old farmhouse.
Because when they built the house here, they ran sewer form down the side here and tied in at the farm.
Wakeville Valley?
No, it's right on thirty-one.
Let's see, let's see, this is prior, see now, this is all already serviced by.
Yep.
So, that'll, that'll.
End of thirty-one on the left or the right?
Well, it would be on the left-hand side of the street going away from town towards Wakeville Valley. But I think they might just be some funky little house lots, because there's some funky little house lots in there.
Oh, yeah.
That is, uh, there, right up here is a, uh.
So that road used to go through for a long time?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was the old New England Road, yeah.
This is one, this is one, yeah, last meeting, I actually brought that up in some of the.
And thirty-one went up through the woods.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And, and out, yeah, right across from.
Then she has two slots, two lots there, and she wants to build.
That was a, that was a business. And the woman that lives there.
Good catch, Glenn, good catch.
I've been up there.
Jeez, maybe.
They had a big dance.
Just kidding, I know anything about it.
And they had lights strung up. Outside dancing.
Well, that's pretty cool.
And the woman, a couple of those are now.
I've been here since the mind man of Paul, yeah. Actually, I, well, I started working right when Jay started.
But, yep, that was.
So you figure there were twelve years of Rupp and eight years of, uh, Pierce? And eight years of, of Gallow, so I wasn't town attorney the first several years. I think I became officially town attorney, even though I had done a lot of stuff, when Mr. Pierce got elected and Mr. Lovell decided that he was going to depart. Not permanently, just, you know, from the building.
I, I really don't, don't, I wasn't around BM before Michelle, so I don't do that much.
There was nothing to pay attention to then, before Michelle.
Map twelve?
Yeah, yeah.
Environmental Resources.
I'm in paper.
Carbonate rock.
Excuse me, the water sewer.
Guess county would have this.
They're not gonna do anything with, or they have all that information, it's part of their stuff, yeah.
And they're gonna redo it to be more, to make more sense.
This is very colorful, this is an Easter egg map.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know why we have that. Okay, Matt. See, that still has the old, that still has the old lagoons. Serious lagoons, yeah.
Just outside of town.
Wetlands, because that's all been filled in.
Steep, steep slope over there at Lee Ridge there?
Yeah.
Well, it is, it is.
Springs are right down the road.
Some of those houses, they run their back door. I don't want the mineral now.
Does he only make a left?
Okay, the foot of that, of that hill.
But that's, makes sense too. That bad hill over there.
Shredded my ankle and.
You know, that was the sulfur, sulfur spring, searching for.
Oh, no, that's on the other side, that slips down to where the.
Oh, okay.
With the runoff there. For that hill's pretty, it's pretty steep.
Ouch, how long have you lived here?
That's interesting.
Oh, you're a real new town.
Yeah, it's right down the hill.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Yeah, I guess we stay with twelve.
Everybody good with twelve, map twelve?
Here, what, uh, it's called Water Street.
Provide you updates to that. Okay.
Alright, what are we doing with twelve and thirteen, nothing?
County's gonna provide us the, yeah.
See the encroachment of the quarries.
Resources and the mineral resources over there.
It's not an encroachment, it's a planned expansion.
Planned expansion.
Could be a swimming hole.
Someday, hopefully, it'll be retained into a nice lake. I'll see.
Yeah, I never feel that to be.
There's no way out of that there.
I think it would get some.
How's your house get in there?
Bixler Farm.
Fourteenth Bixler House.
Thirteen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're up to fourteen now.
Yes, fourteen.
Yeah, the Dillman, we'd wanna get on.
The Huber Farm, Bixley Farm.
Dillman not on here?
Nope, Dillman not.
All the old farms. Frank Getty Farm.
Bixlers.
Frank Getty, interesting.
Let it go on the market again.
Well, I don't know why Milldale is apparently one word in one place and two words in two other places. Who's Milldale Farms? Who owns Milldale Farms? Is that Hibberts? This, no, these are Hibberts.
Yeah, there's an orchard on that.
That's, um, what's their name?
They never.
Is that, um, Tribble, yeah. Frank Getty, I wonder if there's any relation to Jay Paul Getty, probably not.
That's the, the yellow turtle, or the whatever it's called now.
I have Miss Windsor Castle, where the heck is Windsor Castle?
Back in the day.
The turtle.
What is Windsor Castle?
Yeah, seasons.
Seasons, yeah, yeah.
But I was in insurance office.
Yeah, what we all, I have one here.
What's that?
Stillhouse.
A cross-reference to all the new people that live in those houses?
No, there's still.
Clifford Still?
Yeah, the Clifford Still, he's very famous.
There's a star, but it doesn't.
He got a wing, his own wing.
Also, uh, thirty-one?
In this house.
Oh, Han and Engler Farm, I don't know who it's.
Should we do the Santilia House?
That would be, I guess.
I wanna know what Windsor Castle means.
Windsor Castle is the, um, yellow turtle, which is now called.
Seasons of Magnolia.
Seasons of Magnolia, man, or whatever.
I recently acquired a postcard from early nineteen hundreds with, uh, Windsor Castle on it, and we're like, what the heck is it? And it was that, it's that house.
How about that, New Windsor?
Yep.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
It was a hotel, I guess.
What about Rooks Grocery? Is that, that, that any historical significance? That was kind of cool to have.
I don't know if we would want to talk to the. Heritage, Heritage.
I'll reach out to that.
And see if they would like to provide us updates to this map. Yes.
I'll reach out to Heritage Committee, and then once I get some feedback on that, I'll also give you the address where the Clifford Still.
Yeah, yeah, look, here's the sulfur spring. How they described it, but they, they have it on High Street. I didn't think the sulfur spring was on High Street.
Wasn't that called, before Dillman, wasn't it called Sulfur Spring Inn?
Maybe they, maybe that's what that means.
I bet you that's what it is.
But it's not, it's not where, it's not where it is. In this little inset on map fourteen.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Right next to the El Halb, El Hombra, El Hanan?
Well, it's Engler.
The Engler.
Engler House and then Sulfur Spring, it says underneath, but that's not where my understanding of where that spring was, when it was a spring.
Yeah, I thought it was up here.
It's at the bottom of Water Street.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Should be over there.
No, I'm, I'm talking about them.
But I was reading, there were other sulfur springs when Rayrod went through that they were destroyed.
So these are.
No, that's, that's not, that can't be true, that can't be Snaters, this is right here in town.
Okay.
Are all these structures still in existence, or are they some of them notions? I mean, Avalon is still there.
Oh, that's my heart.
I think the, the names, I'd imagine the, the, uh, uh, Historicals Committee. Contributed to this.
Yeah, I'll reach out to that. Reason I ask is I was thinking something like the old train station.
I mean, that, that's gone, that's a parking lot.
What a shame.
And then it's best for us all not to discuss that whole parking lot issue ever again.
I was just talking about losing the railroad station.
Okay.
Fifteen.
Map fifteen.
Save for Queen.
Land use designation. This looks all similar. I don't think we already had this.
Isn't it pretty much the same as one?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, ninety-seven, so I was like what it was two years prior.
Oh.
Yeah.
Not much change.
Yeah, this one was pretty much what you would have.
Yeah, not much really changes here, and that's a nice thing.
And that's why, that's why that piece of property is on there, Dave, because ninety-seven was there, and this is two thousand and seven.
So they keep that historical.
So technically, I mean, while I'm in the ninety, two thousand and seven land use specifications, we know where the essence of that's at. And then, and we could also keep ninety-seven on this, so just a chronology for the.
Why? Why don't we have, have like eighteen ninety-four?
You could do it.
Well, I, I would think that, wouldn't we want map one to be the most recent?
Yes.
So now we get, that won't be what the current land use.
Yes.
Not the current, but what the two thousand and seven projections were, and then map fifteen, I mean, was it? Is, then you have the existing land use, so you have what it was, two thousand and seven, or so, so what?
Yeah, we'd rather have what it is now, number one.
And then, you would have, so if you want to be, you know, we could just, you want to have a view of that, so maybe it's map one.
I would think what map one should be is the current, at least as current as we know it, and then if you need to put something in for historical purposes, put that at the end. Because I was already confused, because I was thinking map one was the latest in here, it was, yeah.
So essentially, we actually did map four, we call that one. And map four, existing use of land.
So was map one the original master plan?
It was the master plan for ninety-seven.
Okay.
So every two years, so I go back to ninety-seven, more unlikely, eighty-six, eighty-seven. They just lose, there was.
So four should get a one.
Your future land use of your previous plan, then comes your, your post map.
That'd be so busy.
You know, you won't, when you make map number one, the map number four, so technically, you actually include the river map. So you now have a ninety-seven land use designation, or two thousand and seven land use designation map, you would just have existing use of land map, and then all these maps would go up by.
If you wanted the last map to be the two thousand and seven, just have that in there, I, I guess that's fine as a reference to be able to go back, but.
Yes. Yeah, I don't mind that being at the end, yeah, so there was no confusion.
It just shows there's not much change.
Yeah, right. Okay, I see why they have it there, though, okay. So these maps are referenced throughout the document, right? So that's another reason why they did it that way, right? Because then when they did the amendment, they just stuck it at the end, they didn't have any text changes as well.
Map sixteen.
This is sort of a composite of a half a dozen of the other maps.
That is pretty much, yeah, so the maps, there's the comprehensive, the comprehensive of maps, so it pretty much is a composite. Everything put on there, except like water sewer, as in the roads, your future land use, your current land use, sometimes, so you have sort of a hodgepodge. The one map that has always, everything on it.
With that being the last map.
Yeah, that, well, that's, that, that could, that's good, it's fine, with all the updates to it, and that would be the last one.
None of them have the road not there.
Yeah.
And that's been that way, since I've been here for twenty, two thousand.
So if you could work with Abigail and get some of the two emails, forward it out to everybody, and then we can, you know, at our leisure, look at these and then come with any comments for the next time we're together. And I think the next time we meet, we should collect the beginning and try to roll through.
I have notes, you have notes.
Yeah, you thought you got away with it. Um, so our next meeting is the twenty-third. We tried this in the fall, and I wasn't able to get it also because of the COVID, it was tricky. But I reached out to Ed Paul's Grove, and, um, I got the check email before I left, so I don't want to do that, but he gave me some April dates, but they were, yeah, it's too late. But this is about taking a tour of the town facility. We've done this, town council has done it, uh, we did offers for the planning commission a couple of years ago, and a couple, I don't know if you went on.
Yeah.
You've probably played with all those places, um, but it is, it's a nice, uh, you really get a perspective of, we're a small town, but there's a lot that needs to be done behind the scenes. So, um, I will email you when I get the dates, and, and keep an eye out for the email, and when you see it, respond back to me, you can see the fifteen come together with Ed. Like to try to do it in May, starts to get hot in June, but, you know, May or June, you know, tend to do it in spring or fall, but I know he was willing to do it again, we've been working out that small. So, um, musical main is the first of October.
Correct.
Please put that on your calendars, and I'm sure that the committee will always use and help through.
Yep.
Carnival, I did write the dates down.
Uh, I think it's the seventh to the ninth, or eleventh, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of June.
Won't have all the rides.
No, we're gonna have some like bounce houses for kids and some, uh, dime pitch and, and some games, and then, uh, Thursday and Friday, we'll have lunchtime, we're gonna have lunch.
Lunch.
On Thursday and Friday.
Is that first week in June?
Yeah, that'll be the ninth, tenth, and the eleventh.
And is there ever any talk about doing the pit beef camp?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll have all the carnival.
I'm thinking of the drive-off stuff.
I haven't heard them, haven't heard any discuss, yeah, I haven't heard any discussion of it, but, uh.
You get there, they take your order outside, and then you drive around through the fire hall, you go right through the bay where the fire trucks usually. You get there, they take your order outside, and then you drive around through the fire hall, you go right through the bay where the fire trucks usually are parked, and somebody take your card, give you a bag of pit beef or turkey, and it was wonderful, and it went really quick, so.
Yeah, so.
But I'm sure there's so much.
I think since things have opened up in more public, you, you know, they've done away with that, so. So they, they will have it, though, for the Carnival.
Is there talk about maybe trying to get back to having the Carnival, what it used to be, or is that?
Uh, well, uh, we lost our ride provider.
Oh, okay.
So they're trying to, I think next year they might look into, see if they can get a, a regular ride provider, so.
What, do they just shut down, or?
Uh, no, they picked up another venue in, around Philadelphia, so.
More money.
So, uh, yeah, the Emmitsburg Church and Union Bridge and New Windsor, those spots were, weren't available anymore, so.
They're pulled.
Anybody have any other thoughts, questions? Give two seconds, and say the five, okay. If you have a motion to.
Motion, Chair.
Kevin, second. Second. Second by Glenn, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.